Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 24 Wallingford Board of Education Meeting. I'd ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. LeVell, could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mrs. Roggio?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Six members present and voting.
Thank you so much. So this is a new academic year for us, obviously, and with that brings, in our case, new student board reps. So I want to welcome both Lyman Hall and Sheehan's board reps. For Lyman Hall, we have Audrey Larson, and for Marty Sheehan, we have Marissa Galicia. I'm gonna, hopefully that's pronounced well. So we'll start with Lyman Hall. Audrey, if you're here, come on up. Welcome. How are you, Audrey?
Good.
Good. Good to see you again.
Thanks, you too. Hi, my name is Audrey Larson, and I'm a 10th grader at Lyman Hall High School, and I'm here to tell you about some of the interesting things that have been happening so far at Lyman. Lyman's school year began, at least to our band students, on August 13th with two solid weeks of band camp, ending with our preview show before the first day. Our first day ran smoothly, and it was wonderful to be back in school. Soon after the beginning of the school year, some of our clubs, like Student Council, Environmental Club, Adelante, Key Club, and Mock Trial began. On September 13th, we had our school pitchers. On the 14th, we had our first home football game against Montville, and we won 41 to 0. Our boys soccer team and girls soccer team has a doubleheader tonight at Sheehan. On the 21st, our girls volleyball team defeated Mercy 3 to 0, and our field hockey team recently tied with Haddon-Killingworth. On the 15th, Lyman Hall High School marching band had its first competition at Maloney High School, and they also had another competition on the 22nd. Lyman won both of these competitions with its new show titled Atlantis. The marching band will also be having its home competition on October 13th. On the 19th, we had our first office hours, during which we had freshman academy and college representative visits. On the next office hours, we will also be having college representative visits. Our open house is this Wednesday, where parents will have the opportunity to see their children's classes and get a feel for their day-to-day schedules. Our seniors have begun training for Powderpuff and are super excited for game day. On the 10th of October, the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will be taking the PSATs. On October 15th at the Oak Darryl, there will be a college and career fair for any interested students. On October 26th, our students will be hosting haunted hallways for younger students to come visit. At the end of October, our Ag program will be sending five students to Indiana to represent Lyman Hall in the FFA competition. On November 14th, 8th grade students from DAG will be visiting Lyman Hall and will be taken on tours and welcomed to our school. The Ag program will also be having their open house on November 28th for any interested 8th graders. Thank you.
As always, very busy. Thank you, Audrey. Next, I invite Marissa to come on up. And just make sure, correct me, how did I do on your pronunciation of your name? Is it Galicia or is it?
Galicia.
Galicia, okay.
So I'm the new Student Council President, and Raj was before me. So Student Council so far has, is planning open house. We had Club Recruitment Day, where everyone went to sign up for new clubs. And tonight, we have the doubleheader as Audrey already said. And for Student Council, we're trying to connect it with National Honor Society this year, so that's something we're working closely with. And Student Council also holds our next meeting tomorrow, so today I'm gonna take what is said here back to them and hopefully get some more input. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you. So presentation awards. Dr. Menzo?
Yes. We have obviously several awards tonight, that's why we have a large.
No, we always have a lot of flowers for all of our, yeah, for all of our meetings, yeah.
That's true. That's true. I forgot about that. So what we'd like to do tonight is we want to honor, because unfortunately this year, due to some renovations occurring at both high schools and middle schools, we weren't able to have our normal presentation of awards to our Teacher of the Year, Administrator of the Year, and Para-Educator of the Year at convocation. So we want to do that this evening. And so we're so pleased that we have so many people here tonight. We do have, unfortunately, some people couldn't attend because they had other obligations, but we do want to make sure that we show our great appreciation for the hard work of all of our staff. And these staff that signify truly exemplary, exemplary, I can't even say it, correct, exemplary tasks and behaviors and attributes that we definitely know make a difference in the lives of our students in our district. So at this time, I'd like to recognize, and I'm gonna move over here because it's a lot easier to do so, and actually, may I invite Ms. Lator and Ms. Belizzi to join me? We're going to start with our Para-educators of the year. And we have, unfortunately, several people, as I said, could not attend, but we are going to announce their names, and I'm gonna actually ask Ms. Belizzi if you don't mind doing that. So we have our Para-educators, and then we'll call up our district Para-educator last, who I know would like to say a few words.
Okay, so I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone, and thank you for all of your dedication and hard work. So from Pontel School, we have Allison Blight. Okay, from Stevens School, she's not here, but I want to just acknowledge her as also. Kathryn Sullivan is our Para-educator of the Year from Stevens. From Fritz School, we have Monique Fazino, who could not be with us again tonight, but I want to acknowledge her as well. From DAG Middle School, we have Michelle Ricchio. For Moran, she was not able to come, Leslie Leclair. And for Lyman Hall, we have Brunella Santa Sanchez. Okay, and finally, at this time, we would like to call up Mrs. Sagnella, who is the principal of Parker Farms School, to say a few words about our district Para-educator of the Year.
Thank you, and good evening to our Board of Education, our Superintendent, Dr. Menzo, our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Lator, our Assistant Superintendent of Personnel, Ms. Belizzi, to all of our directors and to all of you who were able to make it here tonight. It is a privilege that I stand before you in honor of Rosa Solis, our Parker Farms Elementary Schools Para-educator of the Year and Wallingford's Public Schools District Para of the Year. Rosa is our bilingual Para-educator at Parker Farms, who has a love and passion for what she does every day, and it shows. She is extremely committed to our students, their families, our staff, and our whole school community. Every morning, Rosa enters the halls of Parker Farms smiling, and every afternoon, she is still smiling as she waves goodbye. When I walk into a classroom to see Rosa in action, I absolutely love that I do not even notice that Rosa is there, because she is nestled in next to her students, sometimes even on the floor with them. She's encouraging them to follow along, translating for them, seamlessly adapting the instructional materials to meet their needs, and building their confidence so that they will try. Rosa's commitment to her students is at the heart of what she does. She cares about them not only as learners, but also as successful students socially and emotionally. If you ask any staff member at Parker Farms about Rosa, they will say, "She is amazing at what she does for our students." Or, "She is an incredible collaborator, helping to develop what our students need." Her collaborative efforts with our bilingual and classroom teachers play an integral part in the planning process for our students' success. Rosa's commitment to her students does not stop with the work that she engages in in the classroom. She sees the importance of keeping families connected to our school. She assists with involving her students' families in their child's education. She works with our classroom teachers to translate for phone calls, sit in to assist with parent conferences, translates for PPT meetings, or any other school-wide function when needed. Rosa also works in collaboration with SCOW to ensure that our families are receiving support that they need inside and outside of school. To help, Rosa's connections to our families has created the bridge for them to see, to feel supported and connected at our school, and for that, we are forever grateful. Our students love her, our staff loves her, and we are so very proud of the work that she does every day with a smile at Parker Farms. As I said, it is a privilege and an honor to introduce Rosa Solis, our Para-educator
Good evening, everybody. First, let me say thank you all for coming this evening to recognize me as a Para-educator of the Year. This is a bit hard for me. I feel very proud working here in Wallingford, and beside all many fantastic educators in Parker Farms School. Before I came in here to the United States, I worked as a social worker in an elementary school in Mexico City. Once here began, I worked at Parker Farms as a bilingual para. That is where I was able to use my expectations and social work to connect with the children's and families who are new in our school community. I had to have many difficulties after moving from another country, aside from learning the language, adapting to the new culture, informing new friendships. I am fully able to understand with empathy all the struggles that our families often experience when they arrive to this country. It is important to me that parents and their children feel comfortable and know that I am always able to help them. My mission is to connect and support all the parents in our school community, and making them feel valued and important piece of the children's. I want to say thank you again to all my coworkers and my specialists, the ones that nominate for this degree. I feel very proud to work in Parker Farms and the public school.
So also, in addition to a little gift and the flowers, which we'll get back to, we also are donating a book to the library at Parker Farms in your name. So if you want to take it home, take a look at it, and then, I know Ms. Fredrickson will want it for the students, but if you could, we just wanted to do that on your behalf. So what it says on inside, and this is the same thing for our Teacher of the Year and our Administrators of the Year, or the Administrator of the Year, it just says, "This book is donated to Parker Farms Elementary School in honor of Rosa Solis, Wallingford Public Schools Para-educator of the Year, September 2018." All right, so now I'm gonna call upon Ms. Lator, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, to call the Teachers of the Year.
It's an honor to be able to announce each school's Teacher of the Year. I'll start Sharon Dressopolis, Teacher of the Year for Lyman Hall High School. From the Integrated Preschool at Cook Hill, Riley Bronstein. Although she couldn't be here, Sheehan's Teacher of the Year, Erica Frasilius. From DAG Hammerhill Middle School, Brian Tracy. From Mary G. Fritz Elementary School, Jennifer Piccirillo. From Rock Hill Elementary School, in honor of Katrina Torres. From Cook Hill Elementary School, Alexa Bissett. She could not be here tonight. And finally, I'd like to call up the Principal of Moses Y Beach Elementary School, Rob Arcero, who has a few words to say about Moses Y's Teacher of the Year and our district Teacher of the Year, Jessica Harris.
All right, good evening. Let's give another round of applause for these amazing, talented educators. The engine that drives this district. I am thrilled tonight to share with you a little bit more about a major pride point for us at Moses Y, and that is none other than Jessica Harris. As a child, Jess always knew she wanted to be a teacher. Whether it was reading aloud to her pretend class of dolls, gathering neighborhood friends for school sessions, or coaxing siblings into participating in class, education has always been a part of her soul. Upon completion of her elementary education bachelor's degree at Penn State University, Jess began her teaching career that fall as a first-grade teacher in Wallingford. Since that time, Jess has taught 3rd, 4th, 2nd grades, but spent a majority of her years as a classroom teacher in kindergarten, which we all know that's where everybody learned what they needed to know to be successful in life. Go primary school. After obtaining her master's degree in remedial reading and language arts from Central, Jess decided to embark on a new career chapter in 2015, when she became a K2 Reading and Math Interventionist at our home at Moses Y, and we couldn't be more thrilled. Jess believes that equity in education doesn't mean treating all children exactly the same. It means providing each child with what he or she needs individually to be successful. I knew immediately when I talked to Jessica before transferring to Moses Y that she would be an amazing fit for our school community. You see, as a primary learning institution, we know there's lots to learning in a school setting, reading, writing, math, and such, but Jess also understands what it means to educate the whole child, and brought to us ideas and practices such as mindfulness. Her mark in the couple-year span that she's been with us has been amazing, and she's set down roots and created a culture at our school that will last long beyond her years with us. Jess, I am thrilled and honored to be the proud principal of Moses Y, and you are significantly a part of that. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm honored, and without further ado, Jessica Harris, Wallingford
Good evening, everyone. One warm afternoon last spring, I was sitting outside on the driveway with my nine-year-old daughter Lily playing a game. As we sat on our beach towel, we took off our shoes and let the sunshine hit our toes. As I looked down at my hands of cards, wondering what to lay next, I heard Lily's sweet voice say, "Mommy, I just love how my barefoot feels as I tap it on the driveway. It's a good feeling." I watched as she continued to tap her foot, tap, tap, tap. A gentle breeze started to blow, and the wind began to move Lily's hair this way and that. Smiling, she said, "I love when the wind feels like this on me." While I was sitting there thinking about my next move in the game, what I was making for dinner, and my upcoming reading lesson, Lily was focused on nothing but the present moment. She was connected. How effortless this was for her. It takes work for me. All day, every minute, every second, our brains produce thoughts. In fact, the human brain has about 60,000 thoughts each day. For us teachers, who are truly planners by nature, you can be sure that our daily thought tally well exceeds the average. But did you know the majority of our thoughts each day are focused on the future or the past? Very few of our thoughts actually focus on the present moment. To me, this documented fact seems so unbelievable. After all, the present is what is right in front of us. In reality, it should be the easiest to notice and connect to, but why then aren't we really seeing it? If you are like me, my brain is typically accustomed to being set in planning mode. As teachers, we plan; as coaches, we plan; as parents, we plan. Being a planner can be good in a lot of ways. It can help us be prepared, and being prepared provides a sense of comfort. But sometimes, planning just takes over. It can be exhausting and cause us to miss the moments that are happening right in front of our eyes. As teachers, I encourage you to make the conscious choice to, at times, turn off your planning mode and tune more into the present mode. Being present with our students is so powerful, because it increases our ability to connect with them, which is, at its very core, why most of us became teachers in the first place. Being in the moment allows us to see that smile, sometimes even the toothless ones, hear that giddy laughter, celebrate that accomplishment, or be there to witness the moment, that exact moment, when a child's eyes widen and light up, knowing they finally got it. These nonverbal experiences with students are precious and valuable and cannot be replicated. We need to be present to truly see them. Isn't it funny how sometimes children can explain and understand certain things better than adults ever can? I always find this to be true about my seven-year-old son, Owen. In the words of a Moses Y Beach 2nd grader, "When I am present, I am calm and focused and know what is going on." And another student, "When I am present, I feel relaxed. I can really listen to the person who's talking to me." There is a difference between hearing the words of a student, sometimes through the shuffle of papers or while walking across the room to pick up a mess, and really listening to those words. As teachers, we cannot underestimate the power that comes from listening, really and truly listening to our students with present-time awareness and engaging in conversations. It is sometimes within these short conversations that we can learn more about a student than any assessment or written performance task can ever tell us. These explanations for 8-year-old children synthesize the essence of why being present is so important. As written in our district's mission statement, "We want all learners to pursue and discover their personal best." My words to you, be the educator that embodies the present-time awareness to notice those moments when each student's personal best is being realized as it's happening. There are 1,440 minutes in each day. As we begin this new school year, I challenge you to make an effort to live more of those moments in the present. Be present with your students, be present with your colleagues, be present with your families. It is only in the present that little moments emerge which can truly fulfill us as educators and human beings. One of my favorite quotes by Tai Naht Han sums up for me the importance of living life in the present. "Live this actual moment. Only this actual moment is life." I'd like to close by sharing a short video with you, a story read by some 2nd graders at Moses Y Beach called "Now."
Now by Antonette Portez. This is my favorite breeze. This is my favorite leaf. This is my favorite hole, this one, because it is the one I am digging. This is my favorite mud. This is my favorite worm. This is my favorite cloud, because it's the one I am watching.
This is my favorite rain.
This is my favorite rain.
That was my favorite oak.
This is my favorite tree, because it's the one where I am swinging.
This is my favorite smell. This is my favorite bird.
And this is my favorite song, because it's the one I am singing.
This is my favorite gulp. This is my favorite bite.
This is my favorite tooth, because it's the one that is missing.
This is my favorite hug. This is my favorite mmm.
And this is my favorite now, because it's the one I am having...
With you!
This year, try to live in more of those "now" moments. Thank you.
So, one thing that was not mentioned, but is very important for everyone to know, is that Jessica is not only a semifinalist in the state, but also a finalist. So she is now one of four finalists for State of Connecticut Teacher of the Year. The other little-known fact is that if, and if we're in capable hands here with Jessica, that's for certain, but there's never been a district to have repeated Teachers of the Year as a state Teacher of the Year ever in the history. So last year, we had Erin Berthold, and this year, Jessica, we know we have the best chance possible with you in that role, so everybody has to have good thoughts Friday afternoon. Friday afternoon, the state will be doing its tour of our district and be spending a lot of time with Jessica and many, many of her Moses Y Beach family, as well as other members of our community. So we wish you the best. We know you'll do a great job, and no matter what happens, we are so proud of you. We are so, so thankful for what you do for your children every day, and not only just the ones you have here, who I know both. Lily's like beaming. So, my buddy, I miss you in class. We'll have to do it again. But the thing is, we can't thank you enough, and so best of luck. Keep us posted. I know I'll know when you know. And you have a very proud group of colleagues here tonight to support you, so congratulations. So I would like to thank, before we continue, I'd like to thank all the administrators who came out tonight to support their Teachers of the Year. It is so incredible to have all of you here, to really show your support to them and also your appreciation for their hard work, because we know that these individuals make your jobs a lot easier. That's for certain. We're very appreciative of that. But last but not least, we have our Administrator of the Year, and I get to talk about Chris Friend. Chris Friend, principal of Cook Hill Elementary School, is Wallingford Public Schools Administrator of the Year for 2018. I have known Chris now for well over, probably almost 15 years, because I had the pleasure of working with Chris in my former district in Marlboro. At that time, Chris, and many of you who know Chris, would not be surprised by the fact that Christine was a reading interventionist. And she, in her role as a consultant for the school, just knew so much about her students, so much about her understanding of the families, understanding of their needs, understanding of their areas of strength, and she always worked with students from that area of growth, but also strength. I was fortunate enough, now going on, what is it, six years, seven, six years, five years, sorry, it feels like it's been a long time, that Christine was fortunate enough to apply to Wallingford Public Schools as principal of Cook Hill and was the successful candidate. And in her role as principal, she has taken her passion for students, especially in literacy, but for everything, in every aspect of their daily life. She's taken her passion, and she's really made that a guiding force at Cook Hill. And as a result, it's a fantastic community, a fantastic community of learners, of people who are willing to care for each other, care for the students, care for their families. Christine is the first person who will speak up and say, "Wait a minute, I'm not feeling good about this decision. We need to think about this, because is the student really benefiting from this opportunity, or is this potentially about the adults or some other person in the group?" And I have so much admiration, because it takes, number one, courage, it takes confidence in oneself to do that, and Christine has that, she exudes that, and I believe that we are so much better as a community, a learning community in Wallingford, for her being part of our team. I know personally, I've learned so much from Christine. I consider her not just a colleague, but a friend, who I know continues challenging herself to grow, and as a result, challenges everyone in her community to grow in a similar manner. Not just her teachers, her par educators, her clerical, her colleagues, everyone knows that as they work with her closely, they are growing as individuals in their understanding of what's best for students. So it is my distinct pleasure, my honor as superintendent, as a friend, to call up Christine Friend to receive Administrator of the Year.
So, good evening, everyone. I hope you can bear with me, I might be a little long-winded, but this is the only opportunity I've had in my career to speak about my role over the last 30 years, and I think it's really important, so I wanted to take the time to do it. It is with great honor and pride that I accept this distinguished award, 2018 Administrator of the Year for Wallingford Public Schools. As principal of Cook Hill Elementary School, my position is one of both the highest professional accomplishment and personal achievement. My dream come true, a chance to utilize my knowledge and skills while following my passion. I thank the Board of Education for believing in me. I thank Dr. Menzo and Cindy Lavelette for their ongoing professional support, Vicki Reed, Rob Arcero, Carrie Latour, Danielle Belizzi, and Donna Curtis for their camaraderie, collaboration, and friendship. And the staff of Cook Hill School for all of their partnerships, all of whom are responsible for an improved school climate and increased student outcomes. As I always say, it takes a village, and how proud I am to be part of this village. The oldest of five children, I knew that I wanted to be a teacher as early as 7th grade. In high school, I volunteered in an elementary classroom and served as a counselor for the district's science camp. I was an avid babysitter, taught swimming lessons at the local YMCA. It was no surprise when I applied to be a teacher, to pursue a career in education at the University of Maine at Farmington. My fondest memory of early elementary school was greeting my principal at the door every morning. He knew us all by name, and I knew he cared about me. School was not always comfortable for me, however. I was extremely chy and often chose not to participate. Therefore, my voice was not always heard. Assessments were not a true picture of my knowledge, and I was often misunderstood and considered a weaker student. I was afraid to make mistakes and never wanted attention of any kind paid to me. Teaching awakened my voice. Working with children, I became more outgoing and confident. My students inspired me and gave me courage. They offered me unconditional validation, and they encouraged me to take risks, stand up for my beliefs, and continue my quest for learning. Growing up in a coastal town in Maine, I was the daughter of a pharmacist. He had returned to his hometown after college to work in a family drugstore. The third generation of the true family, and yes, I was a true, and now I'm a friend. So, from a very early age, I worked making ice cream, serving from an old-fashioned soda fountain, and taking pride in my work while building community relationships. I learned the importance of hard work and the value of giving. My father was perhaps the most generous and humble person I have ever known. He taught us to be thankful for our blessings, to help those who were less fortunate, especially the sick and disabled. My mother, the daughter of a glass blower for MIT, taught me to persevere. Her message was simple, hardship built character, hard work made you responsible, and although fear was real, so was hope. She encouraged us to reflect and learn from our mistakes. Responsibility was non-negotiable. We needed to learn how to take charge, focus on the task at hand, and follow through to completion. My mother believed in making lemonade from lemons. She told us, "Never use the word 'board.' It is your responsibility to be challenged." My greatest lessons, however, came from being a mother. Nothing would prepare me for sending my own children to school. I experienced a new appreciation and understanding for parents. My son Andrew was somewhat of a challenging student. When given the choice between being his mother or teacher, I chose to be his mother. A very social and hands-on learner, he did the best for the teachers who took the time to get to know him. Andrew was extremely perceptive. He could tell if a teacher didn't want to be in the classroom that day. He could tell if adults were not seeing eye to eye, and he always knew everything that was going on outside the classroom walls and windows. His teachers consistently told me he wasn't working to his potential. He told me it wasn't meaningful learning, and he questioned how it would be applied in the real world. Needless to say, I had my hands full and had many conversations trying to convince him to just learn the system, do what he needed to do, and someday he would be rewarded. In the summer of 7th grade, he convinced me to let him design and install a concrete floor in his half of the shed. In high school, he built a wood splitter using the engine from an old lawn tractor. In college, he took a class, more than one class, over again after receiving a C and not meeting the required D for his major. Once, he told me that everyone should experience taking a class again. You learn so much more the second time around. He wasn't paying the bill. Andrew graduated from Maine Maritime Academy and is a captain on a 240-foot vessel, which houses a floating hotel and a helicopter pad. And he accomplished all of this before his 30th birthday. I am sure some of his teachers would not have predicted his success. Andrew taught me to be more creative, to take a chance, and not be afraid of failing. His thirst for knowledge in his field of interest was unstoppable. His perseverance for achieving his goal was phenomenal. My daughter Carolyn, on the other hand, valued school and always aimed to be a high achiever and please her teachers. She pushed herself beyond her limits and was so hard on herself when she perceived things as not going well. She was frustrated with the teachers who did not stay on topic. She looked for ways to further her own learning, and she surrounded herself with high achievers at school. Carolyn did not like it when teachers used her as a positive role model or shared her grades, her good grades, publicly. She did not want this attention. Carolyn's ability to show mastery of learning became impacted by her anxiety around exams. She needed to learn to advocate for her needs and reach out to teachers for guidance and understanding. A registered nurse, graduating with honors, Carolyn taught me the importance of social emotional learning for students. Her ability to reflect, self-advocate, and overcome challenges with courage amazed her teachers and her counselors. Although she once told me that she would never be a teacher, I continue to remind her how similar our careers really are. I have been blessed with over 30 years of service in educating the youngest learners. From my students, I have learned to be fair, rigorous, and have high expectations. I have seen the value of perseverance and commitment. I know that forming personal connections is critical to student's success. Taking the time to validate and appreciate a child's interests, share a story, and provide a safe, trusting presence is by far the most important goal. I have also learned that true wonder is essential. It is the seed that motivates the learner. This summer, I had the opportunity to watch the movie Wonder with Julia Roberts and Owen Wilson, based on the book by R.J. Palacio. Augie, a child with a medical condition called Treacher-Collins Syndrome, is entering school for the first time as a 5th grader. His mother and father are beyond worried. What if someone makes fun of him, if he is bullied, if he doesn't fit in? To his mother, he is a wonder. Wonder is defined as a feeling of surprise mingled with admiration, caused by something beautiful, unexpected, unfamiliar, or inexplicable. Reminiscing about the feelings I had experienced when I sent my children to school and experiencing it now as a grandmother for the first time, I connected with Augie's mom. We all believe that our children are wonders. With a leap of faith and trust, we drop our babies off at school and we wonder if they will be all right. Let me share some of the great wonders I have watched grow. First, there is Jay, who was born with a cleft lip and had multiple surgeries to improve his appearance, including one that removed a bone from his hip to be placed in his jaw for a tooth to be implanted. Jay collected money for the Smile Train every year. Then there was C, who was legally blind and able to maneuver the halls of Cook Hill School with perseverance and humor. He gave his teachers and peers the gift of empathy every day. I entered Cook Hill without any understanding of the English language and bravely took on this quest for learning. Her ability to take risks had no limits. M was faced with brain surgery in the spring of kindergarten. He worried that his friends would be frightened when they saw him without hair, so he put on his Red Sox hat and bravely re-entered the school with faith and trust. And certainly, but not least, and last, I was reminded of the three children who lost their dad on the first day of school a few years ago. Their courage and commitment was a lesson to us all. In the presence of wonders every day for this many years, I can certainly call myself privileged and blessed. In the movie Wonder, Mr. Tushman, school principal, said, "The best way to measure how much you've grown isn't by inches, or the number of laps you can run around the track, or even your grade point average," though those things are important, to be sure, "it's what you've done with your time, how you've chosen to spend your days, and whom you've touched this year." That, to me, is the greatest measure of success. Greatness, wrote Beecher, "lies not in being strong, but in the right using of strength. He is the greatest whose strength carries up the most hearts." My work is my passion, my joy, and my inspiration. My goal is to touch the hearts of children. Each day is a gift, and each wonder is a unique blessing. I thank my Cook Hill colleagues, families, and students for their trust and belief in me as their principal. In the words of John Wesley, and is quoted in the movie Wonder, "I encourage you all to do all the good you can by all the means you can, in all the ways you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as you ever can. Your selfless acts are noticed, your work does make a difference, and you will reap the rewards and experience wonder too."
So needless to say, we have a lot to be proud of in Wallingford. Our par educators, our teachers, our administrators, we cannot do what we do on a daily basis for the students and families without your hard work. So thank you again, and I know that everyone truly appreciates all that you've done, and I don't know if any board members want to make comments?
Yeah, I do. I'll start, and I'll open it up if any board members want to make a comment. First off, I want to say congratulations to all our recipients that we acknowledged this evening, but more importantly, I want to say thank you. We, as a board, can make a million different policies and put a lot of words on... and put a lot of words on paper. But the bottom line is, we fly up here. It's what you folks do every single day that impacts our families, our community, and of course, our students. So as much as we are an important cog in the wheel, it all rests on you folks, because you're boots on the ground every single day. And I can't imagine, you know, I'm sure there are days that are just... You come with your own personal burdens, successes, frustrations. But somehow or other, you folks manage to put them aside and put your students first. And that's what keeps us, as a board, clicking along every single day. Because we know you are there to, you know, our philosophy on the board is every decision we make is about putting all students first. And we can use that rhetoric. But it's not us that does the heavy lifting. It's all of you folks. So on behalf of the Board of Ed, I want to say a heartfelt thank you for your every single day commitment to the Wallingford Board of Education and to all of our families and students. So thank you for that. Good? Did I do okay, board members? Okay, cool, okay. You know what? I will give an opportunity right now. If anybody, I know we have riveting meetings and people want to stay. But I will give everybody, why? Why are you laughing? Okay, so if anybody does want to leave, this would be a perfect opportunity to quietly exit the auditorium. And again, congratulations to all recipients. Thank you.
Hello. So then I think to Rob, it was just, it was in that moment. It was just, I could see the worst. And then they look at you.
We have a close group, I do myself. Okay, with that, we'll continue with our meeting. Item 6, question and answer period. Are there any questions for the Wallingford Board of Education? Okay, I'm going to assume not. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session for items E1 through E6?
Some moved.
I'm sorry, who had my first?
I did.
Okay, first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're in executive session. Okay, we are back. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're out of executive session. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.16?
Some moved.
Second.
Have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. As a result of seven, we do not have any items removed from the consent agenda item for item I, item eight, excuse me. Item nine, correspondence. Mr. Reynolds, you're up.
First, we would like to thank Anthem Blue Cross for two gifts, each one valued at $2,500. The first was for literacy and numeracy materials for our elementary schools. The second gift was to the literacy and numeracy program to expand the use of library and media centers in our elementary schools.
Go Anthem. No, that I just said, go Anthem.
Second, we would like to thank Joyce Springer, Director of Sales in the STEM category, School Specialty, for the donation of $1,200 to the Wallingford Elementary Schools. Third, we would like to thank the Child Health Development Institute of Connecticut for a donation of $9,162.87 to the Wallingford Public Schools. Dr. Menzo, I know what it was like to you. Did you want to mention anything about that?
Yes, that's actually in-kind services that they're offering for our schools in the area of working with students who have been impacted by trauma. So last year, we came to the Board of Education in the spring. We talked about the CBITS program and the Bounce Back program, which we were being, we were selected by Child Guidance Samaritan to offer those services to our students and their families. So we just wanted to recognize them because that's, those are resources that we would otherwise have to contract out for. So that's very important.
Thank you.
Just the other one about the STEM. That one came from a connection that we made when we were at the ISTI conference in the summer. One of the vendors that we made sure that they were willing to donate to us. And we're actually, Kate O'Donnell and I just met with them on Thursday or Friday of last week, they're blurring, to go over the fact that we're looking for additional donations also.
Thank you. And last, we would like to thank Christopher Poransky for the donation of two $1,000 gifts to the Families in Need Program.
Okay, very good. Next are our committee reports. Item 10, starting with ACES representative, 10.1. Mrs. Levac, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure.
The ACES Governing Board met on September 13, 2018. The minutes of the June meeting were approved. During the public participation portion of the agenda, a parent, John Patrick, from New Haven, indicated that two of his children were attending the Wintergreen Magnet School and that he was concerned about the future of that school. The new chief of the ACES Institute, Valerie Fenn, was introduced. The Teacher of the Year and other award recipients were presented to the Governing Board. Of note, Courtney Jackson, a staff member at WIMS, was recognized for her quick thinking and intervention on the second day of school when she saved a child from choking. The Executive Director, Dr. Thomas Danahue, reported that convocation took place at the Oakdale in August. The Board Chair, Norman Hicks, and the Executive Director recounted their trip to China to view the campus there and to share information regarding the status of the International Education Program. Three teachers from ECA will be spending a semester in China, while one teacher will be there for the year. The Leader Hill Construction Project continues. There was a delay in the delivery of the steel roof trusses. However, the project should be finished and student-ready by August 20, 2019. A coordinator has been hired for the ACES Brokerage Services for Special Education Transportation for those students attending non-ACES schools. ACES will be managing a program for students with emotional disabilities in grades K through 6 at the Mead School in Ansonia, beginning in November 2018. Initially, five students will be served. The Governing Board approved the filing of the fiscal report, subject to audit, the Human Resources Report, and the Early Head Start Report. The Governing Board approved the organizational chart for 2018-19. The new chart reflects the recent changes that have been made at ACES. Presentation of Policies Number 3997: Disposition of Assets and 4118.25: Fraternization for a First Read took place. Copies of the ACES Annual Report and the completed audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017 were disseminated to the Governing Board members. A curriculum and instruction update was presented by Mr. William Rice, Assistant Executive Director. Topics addressed included the new ECA Virtual Reality Arts Course, which has eight students in the program. Two new students from China were welcomed at the New Haven Academy and ECA. TEMS is embarking on a major professional education initiative, Discovering Education with a STEM Focus. WIMS is embarking on a major professional education initiative, Arts Integration. The 2018 Cultural Arts Expo will take place on Friday, September 28, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the Wintergreen Magnet School, 670 Wintergreen Avenue, Hampden. Over 45 artists will be featured within the school. The Hampden Board of Education voted to take back possession of the Wintergreen Magnet School building effective June 30, 2019. All equipment purchased by ACES will be retained by ACES. Any capital improvements to the building will become the property of Hampden. ACES will be searching for another location for WIMS. There was a discussion about regulations, which have not been finalized, regarding restraint, seclusion, and exclusionary timeout. The Governing Board then went into executive session for the purpose of discussing a stipulated agreement in lieu of expulsion and negotiation for the sale of real estate. The next ACES Governing Board meeting is scheduled for October 11, 2018. There are 70 Wallingford students attending ACES programs, which is a significant decrease from last year, when we used to have about 94, 95 students. And the decrease is due to a significant amount of students not being at WIMS. I don't know if anyone has any questions or...
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
When that school was opened, yeah. It was, it had been an elementary school in Hampden. Then it became, I guess, we rented, they rented it to ACES? Is that how it worked? I mean, I'm wondering if they, who did all the renovations to the school? Was it ACES or Hampden?
I believe it was ACES. I believe that's why the statement that Ms. Levac mentioned about capital improvements, those are the benefit now to Hampden Public Schools. But ACES paid those, I believe. And it was also mostly state funding. So it was, it was actually, I should correct myself. Most likely, there was state funding that came through for the Magnet Schools to be established. So a vast percentage was afforded by the state of Connecticut.
I mean, that school was a mess. It hadn't been used in a while. Now, I'm wondering if ACES does find another home, I mean, if WIMS finds another home. If not, is, they say, what did they say about that?
They're, they're seeking another location for the school.
And how many children are there now?
They didn't indicate. They didn't indicate, but my understanding is the...
The numbers are down.
Has gone down, correct.
So is this for, they need a new location for next fall?
Correct.
Is that...
Correct, yes. Hampden will take, their, their plan is to take back the school by the end of this school year.
Seems like they're getting hit with something every year.
Yeah, Jamie. It was just my understanding from my experience at WIMS that their lease was up. So they were actually leasing the building back from Hampden for a dollar a year. So that's what really precipitated the move.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee, Mrs. Latour.
So the first meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, the 26th. So I'll have a report at our next board meeting.
Perfect, thank you. School-to-Career Business Think Tank, Dr. Menzo.
Actually, Ms. Castelli's...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, you wouldn't know. He normally gives the report, but he wasn't able to make the meeting. So I, I do have my notes.
I have it up here.
All right, there were two agenda items that were, that were open for discussion. It was a discussion of the Manufacturing Pipeline Initiative for Walling residents ages 18 and over. This is a six-week program that will prepare participants for well-paying jobs with growth potential at Wallingford area manufacturers. The initiative is a combined effort of the WPS, Wallingford Public Schools, Adult Education, Economic Development Commission, Youth and Social Services, and the Workforce Alliance. The six sessions will include an assessment of current math and reading skills. The next session is a design challenge and math review, then building a resume and reading review, then an interview skills and resume writing assessment, not assessment, session. And then a final design challenge, and then there'll be business interviews. And I believe it's pretty close to fall.
We have 20 students as of today. And I would want to make sure that we definitely recognize Hubcap Wallingford as being really the main force behind this.
The second item discussion, for discussion, sorry? Okay. The second item for discussion was the Student Success Plan and the Naviance, the tool that's used to store those student success plans. Some of the reflective questions that are asked within this tool, I found very profound, actually. They include, what are your academic strengths? What area would you like to improve on next year? What have you chosen to be part of in this year beyond the classroom? Like sports clubs, community service. What have you chosen to take part in? Oops, sorry, already said that one. What are the challenges you have in balancing school and personal life? What resources have you accessed to help with these challenges? What is your current career interest for after high school? How have our career goals, how have your career goals changed since last year? And what steps can you take to further investigate your career interests? So I think those are great questions.
And those questions were actually developed by our staff. Our counseling staff and career and college specialists developed those. Those are not in traditional Naviance.
Oh, really?
So this is a custom, a customization that we're doing internally as a district. So the Student Success Plan is more geared to where we're focused as a district. But this is not a normal component of Naviance. This is being done in-house at no cost, additional cost. We have a variety of staff that have been working on this. So we're very proud of it, and we're launching that because we felt that the Student Success Plan in the past was just a bunch of boxes checked off, tasks. And we wanted it to be more reflective. And this will be done on an annual basis that students and parents could access this. So they'll be able to see the whole story of their child's, you know, development as they go through deciding on what they want to do after high school.
And I think it'll be interesting for the kids, too, as each year, they're going to see when they learn more and they've matured more, how their interests may change or may not. Or, you know, I was spot on, and I knew exactly what I wanted to do from, you know, the get-go. And other kids are going to, who are going to see that they've evolved and be able to reflect back on those changes that they made. And answer these questions.
And the course catalog will be linked to this so that the students, as they get to middle school, they could have access to the high school course catalog and looking at career opportunities. And then also connecting it to where do those careers exist in our community or in our state. So that's a project that Rob Covey, our CTE Coordinator, and I have been working on with local businesses, having them complete templates that will be also linked into this. So that it gives parents and gives students, most importantly, an authentic understanding. Like we heard tonight, Chris Friend talked about her son, who he wanted to know the relevance of what he was learning. How is this going to matter in my life? How is this going to matter to my future career? We're trying to develop that relevance within the system with real scenarios in Wallingford as well as in the state. So that students, it's not just pulling up a video about a person who's doing a job, and it's not relevant to the state of Connecticut. So it really, I'm very proud of the staff. This is a tribute to a lot of staff members working collaboratively on this.
And then there was something else that Rob actually pointed out. I think Jay Che was there, and he had asked the question about exposing kids to opportunities that are there. And Rob talked about the fact that there is a video within Naviance called Road Trip Nation.
Yes.
And kids can go in and look at that. And it shows various jobs and interviews folks that are in those jobs and how they got into those, into those careers. So this is a beginning to help kids find where their interests lie for the future and figure out how to get there. So it was a great meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. PTAC update.
So last Wednesday was our first meeting of the year, and it was a very well-attended meeting. Most of the schools, if not all the schools and departments, were in attendance. We discussed, you know, just bringing everybody up to speed, the STEM initiative that occurred over the summer and then our ongoing efforts this year. The facility study, what it is, some background, and what our next steps are as a district. Some discussion to the much anticipated Parent Choice Awards that are coming up in November. Just fine-tuning the details and recognizing, you know, what a special event that is. So, you know, we, we talked as a group. We talked about things that we might want to discuss and approach. discuss and approach as a system-wide PTAC this year. Many of the schools don't have their first meeting until October, so they will gather, the reps will gather information from each of the building-level PTACs and bring it back to system-wide for, for further review moving forward. So it was a great first meeting. We hope to see that level of participation and commitment all the way through.
Perfect.
The next meeting is October 16th.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, good. Plan of Conservation Development, Mr. Reynolds.
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay. Food Service Strategic Plan Committee, Mr. Mentor, you haven't, I know, we're going to be meeting in October.
Yes, we planned our first meeting for October 16th at Central Office in the personnel conference room, and then the next board meeting, I'll be able to report it.
Perfect, thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Deptula, stage lighting renovation updates for school window replacement, you're on.
Okay, the stage lighting project is coming to a close, a couple weeks for wrapping it up. We're probably about a week behind where we should be, but it's not affecting education at all. So we can expect that to be, the project should be wrapped up by the next meeting, and hopefully I can start to close that out. The four-school-window project, that's basically winding down for the year, and we will start up again next year at Lyman Hall and Highland.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, I guess not. Item 11, old business, I do not believe we have any. Instructional Committee, Mrs. Purcell, you are up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Twelve point one, mastery-based learning update.
So as we have started the school year, the teachers are engaged with the different steps forward that we're making as it relates to mastery-based learning within their curriculum, posting of learning targets on the board, addressing student work with how it relates back to the unit. The level meetings are currently being scheduled, as are the district leadership team meetings. We have not met yet, but we will soon. So I will continue to update the board each month at this time to, to inform you of the things that are happening in those committees.
Thank you. Twelve point two, a presentation of the annual report, 2017, 2018.
Yes, you should have copies of the annual report in your packet. If you've had a chance to review it, I, I commend you. The report continues to expand each year. I think that many of you who have been on the board or in our community for a period of time realize that this is a lot of work that is contributed by a lot of different sources on the many facets of our school district. As always, we review the strategic plan focus areas in the annual report, and we talk about not only what has happened in the past, but what we're doing moving forward. So our key areas that we do address in this plan, and I, and this will go on our website tomorrow, as it has consistently for the years that I've been here, that, so people could read it, but we look at our areas of intervention, models of excellence, proactive student supports with a future focus, and the last one is engaging, empowering learning experiences. Each of these areas, we talk about, again, the highlights of this present school year by level, and then we offer some areas that we look to move forward to in the future. I'd like to draw your attention, though, because it has been such a topic last year, in particular to page 11, which is looking at the area of school safety and security. So if I may have just a moment just to go through this publicly with everyone. I divided this up into areas of communication, collaboration, mental health and trauma, and then the other areas dealing with the actual equipment and such with our concluding points. The reality is, we've had a tremendous amount of work in this area in a collaborative manner with many, many agencies over the last several years in Wallingford. In terms of communication, just to remind everyone, and a lot of this came out last year in the public forum that we had in March, but at Wallingford Public Schools, to have building-based school security and safety committees at each of our schools. Those committees are comprised of students, parents, students when appropriate, of course, parents, administrators, teachers, paraeducators, nurse, clerical. They try to take on the, all the different constituents that the building serves and works within them. We also have our district committees, so those building-based committees filter information to our district committee that meets on a monthly basis. That has representation from the school-based committees, plus the town police department, the fire department, and then other central office resources. These meetings are, are key meetings for us to get communication from the buildings as to what are their concerns, what are the areas that we need to investigate deeper, and also to share where, how we're approaching matters from a district level. Be it the ALICE training that recently occurred, going over our plans that have to be done on an annual basis each year, and we were not on the list of a district who did not submit their security plans, but there, each year we submit our security plan, we update it, and that, that is a crucial, crucial element of this committee. We do risk assessments, so the committee knows that the police are going in with the fire to review those risk assessments. We go over lockdown procedures. We discuss, really use this committee as a place to discuss the, any questions, any revisions that we need to make to our processes. So that ties into the collaboration piece. We've been very fortunate with Youth and Social Service, you know, working with them in terms of the Risky Behavior Survey that we do for all of our students at the high school level for the last six years. We've done it now three times. That, as you know as board members, and I believe most of the public who have had children in the high school know, we're unique. We're the only district in the state of Connecticut that has committed to do this with all of our students. Districts can opt into the state assessment, where you can get asked to do this, and then your data is aggregated with everyone else. Our data is distinct for the town of Wallingford and our students, so then we can put our health improvement plan together, our wellness plan together, in a much more realistic, much more authentic, much more relevant way. So basically, we, we really have worked to ensure that we are continuing to utilize the data from that plan, and we set our goals for this year. And basically, we have written several grants that we wanted to put in place, and one grant, which we, we are waiting to hear on. But the idea is that ensure individuals determined to be potential threat to themselves or others receive a school threat assessment and are referred for services, implement a technology solution such as an anonymous reporting technology system to allow us to address those students, and then implement a technology to decrease response time while increasing capacity for communication in the event of violent event in our schools across the district. Those were three areas that the committee believed in and were committed to, and we believe that we're addressing those through our plan this year. We, as you know, went in front of the town council recently for a, a system that will definitely address number three, which is to decrease the response time of emergency personnel. And then we also have a, we've already put in place resources for number one, which is making sure that students get appropriate services if they are a threat to themselves or others. And number two is about the technology, and that was the piece that we're still, we're putting in place the Securely system, which is monitoring software, or monitoring the use of computers and giving us data so that we can act and be proactive with students who might be potentially doing, considering doing harm to themselves or others. And then there's another element of Securely, which we're going to be hopefully moving forward with, which is the anonymous, anonymous reporting system. So we are looking at that. So I do have to say, this section, I truly have so much gratitude to Karen Veugh, our IT director, for all of her research. She takes this really, really seriously, and she makes certain that we're doing our due diligence. So we have, needless to say, we have addressed a lot in this area. We're very fortunate also, because the police have taken an active role and are committed to responding to all these concerns. The chief did not blink an eye when we said, you know, after hours, we need to make sure that if there's an issue, you're comfortable as a police department, taking, you know, phone calls and acting, and there was not a question. He's absolutely, we're there, just make sure I know what I'm getting for information, you know, things like that. So we're very fortunate. I, I don't, I, again, I know, because I work with my colleagues, I can't say that enough. We're very, very fortunate to have the collaborative relationship that we do. Mental health and trauma, we talked a little bit about two of the programs, the Bounce Back and CBITS tonight, the fact that we're working with Verid and Child Guidance, but we also have been for several years now, giving the DESA assessment to students in grades three through five to identify any areas of need, and then we can proactively address those behaviors, working with social workers and psychologists. Obviously, the increase in our psychologists and social workers at the elementary to have two mental health professionals this year is an incredible resource that we're very fortunate. The responsive classroom, the second step, step curriculum, and then working, of course, in the area of suicide prevention at the high school, looking at a variety of different resources. We've done a lot of training on bullying, sexual harassment, seclusion and restraint, bloodborne pathogens, school violence, sexual violence, and teen dating violence. And these trainings are mandated by the state, but we've also offered trainings for parents in QPR, which was a suicide prevention training. All of these are research-based. These are not just solutions that we're putting forth because we feel they're, they're good or that they're going to do the right thing, but they're all based on a significant research, and we believe that they also have been recommended by a variety of professional organizations, be it the psychological organization, social worker organization, or others. This year, the board, we shared with the board earlier, or at the end of the year, that we were pulling together a bridge team, which is looking at, we hired our own certified behavioral analyst, who's also a special ed teacher, who's working with special ed teacher and a social worker, to triage situations where students may be in crisis. So rather than having it where the student is, we might have to contract out for services, or we might have to, you know, Band-Aid things, so to speak, this team is able to go in, offer support for the student, but also offer support for the teachers that are experiencing the behaviors, and awful, also offer support for the family, because many times those behaviors are, are happening at home as well. So this is a significant first step as we continue to grow this opportunity, as we continue to grow the programming within our district. You'll notice that we did put in here, of course, about the ALICE training, and then the concluding points were just really in reference to the security tools that we have in our schools. And I did, I wanted to say to you that I did share this report with our police chief also, because I wanted to make sure he was comfortable with what I was sharing publicly. So I did share this with him, and he was comfortable with this, and he thanked me for that opportunity to review this prior to submitting this publicly. There are, as you also know, there is, there are the police officers who are in our buildings, and so we're very fortunate to have that representation also for the first time this year. We had a very collaborative and productive meeting about now, it's going on three weeks ago, it was the very first week of school, to go over what were the expectations for the officers. And we have an agreement, which we had to have, because we can't just automatically have officers come into our schools, we had to have an agreement inviting them. So we, we have an official agreement that's been signed off by the Board of Education, myself, and the police chief, basically giving them permission to be in our buildings. And I shared this with all of you prior, but just reminding, just in case.
Quick question. I thought it was like a stop-by kind of thing, or is it on a regular basis when they do enter the schools?
Yes, they're actually spending three hours a day.
Three hours a day?
Three hours a day. There are two officers, so there's one on either side of town. They're focusing initially at the high school, but they have been stopping into the middle schools on a regular basis, you know, during passing time, being in the hallways, different times of the day. We're not setting a, a set schedule, to be honest, because we have to have flexibility, but also we don't want to get too much into a routine so that, you know, there's that flexibility for them.
And how often do they, I've missed...
Daily.
It is daily for like what?
Three hours a day.
Three hours.
Yeah.
Missed that.
Yeah, no, they're very, we're, Mike, there, I, I just cannot be, again, more pleased with the collaboration that we've received, and they would love to be in more, but they had to have other responsibilities, and they're also doing so many things for our school district. I've just asked and requested, I just got today, a report of all the in-kind services that our police officer, officers offer our school district, the police department officers, offers our district. I will send that sheet out to all of you in your Friday packet, because I think you'll be very impressed about how much time our officers are putting into our schools, formally and informally. And I was glad I was, I was able to get, get that, obviously, just had to ask for the chief, and he sent it right over.
And they're different officers, it's not the same?
No, it's the same one.
It is the same.
Oh, yeah. They assigned it. The, the chief did everything. He pulled the team together. It's under Sergeant Blythe's facilitation and coordination, but there are two officers, one for each school, and they're working together. So it's Officer Cadet on one side of town and Officer Bauer on the other side of town. And we're very fortunate that we have that committed resource in the manner that we do.
Thank you.
No, no worries. So those are just some of the high-level security options, but I just wanted to share that because I know that that has been, obviously, on the, in the forefront of all of our minds this past year. Just if you can indulge me, just one more thing, because I just want to make sure I should do a shout-out, obviously, to all of our volunteers and all of our donations. Again, this year, $224,790 worth of donations to the district. You approved some tonight, that'll go on next year's records. That is, every time I, I share these numbers with my colleagues or people, as people come in to visit the district, they're just amazed that we receive that high level of donations. If we go back to 2009, 10, my first year here, it was $10,182. So we've kind of grown a little bit, just a tad. So in the past now nearly ten years, it's $1.2 million, almost $1.3 million being donated to the district, so that's, that's pretty good. And I'm really proud of all of our staff. It's, it's, it's a mindset. I do still get a little, you know, jab every so often from staff members who, you know, they've been tutored by me, to, to, you, you don't get it if you don't ask. So, and we're always respectful, and we always send lots of thank-you notes. Grants also, we had a four-for-four year, which is pretty good. Unfortunately, these are, these are competitive grants, so we're not, as we talk about, we're not always eligible for these, but we did receive $403,000, you know, $303 for grants. And we also see there, our graduation rates continue to increase. We're at 92.2% from last year, which was 91.2. So we, we see a steady grow there, growth there. This information on the next few pages will be part of our second iteration of our balanced scorecard that we sent out to families last January. Karen is already hard at work on pulling together the new data. She and I have already met over the summer, so we're pretty excited. We could get it out sooner, but we kind of got into a good rhythm by having it go out in January. Again, this concludes with a lot of information about our curriculum, which is so important to us, and the hard work of the curriculum staff under the direction of, of Carrie Latour, our Assistant Superintendent. There's the special ed section, there's business office, pupil, there's personnel services, and again, and there's last but not least, technology. But this is, a lot of work goes into this. It's not me. It could never be me. It's the phenomenal team that I'm blessed to work with each day and really get along with in a way that I believe we are moving the district forward. So I could go on and on and on about this, but I won't. But I just, if somebody wants to take a look at it, again, it's on the website, and then we transmit this to the mayor. It has to be to him by this Friday. So Linda reminded me today. So we'll get this to him. And again, I also want to thank Linda for her hard work on pulling this together, too, because there's a lot of information that comes at her, and she does a remarkable job all the time. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions before we move on? Okay. All right, let's go to 12.3, approval of leave of absence. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Catherine Bates be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract for 12 weeks from approximately October 25, 2018, through January 18, 2018. Do I have a second?
I think it's 19.
Actually, I think there's a correction. That would be January 2019, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much. You were right. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion that a leave of absence for Erin Berthold be approved without pay in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract from number, November 16, 2018, through January 31, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Abstentions? Motion carries. Motion carries. 12.4, approval of acceptance of resignations. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept with regret, the resignation of Christina Fridana, effective October 30, 2018. Christine Fridana has been a speech-language pathologist for the Wallingford Public School since March 19, 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept with regret, the resignation of Diane Supercus as of September 22, 2018. Diane Supercus has been a chemistry teacher since August 29, 2012.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. 12.5, approval of appointment of a candidate to teaching position. I make a motion at the Board of Education, approve the appointment of the following candidate to a teaching position for the 2018-2019 school year, contingent upon proper Connecticut certification, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, for Lyman Hall School, chemistry, Ryan Shan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. 12.6, approval of acceptance of candidates to high school coaching positions. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the appointment of the following candidates to coaching positions. Lyman Hall High School, girls tennis coach Samantha Provinzzano, girls lacrosse David Palmer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13, Operations Committee, Ms. Lepac.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Operations Committee meeting took place on September 10, 2018. The meeting minutes for the June 11, 2018 meeting, the Board of Education financial reports, and the cafeteria financial reports for June 2018 were reviewed in committee. Consensus was reached, and the reports were approved under the consent agenda this evening. A discussion took place regarding the Martishian High School track. There was a concern that lines on the track had worn off, especially the hurdle markings, as well as the start and finish lines. Buildings and ground staff will mark these lines in the fall. Information about Alice training was disseminated to the board. A review of the training conducted thus far took place. YMCA staff in the before and after-school programs and Holy Trinity staff will also receive training. A bid waiver is being sought from the town council for the Silox class system. The system provides panic button features and direct communication with classrooms by first responders, it also provides timeline documentation of an event. Graduation requirements were discussed and a handout was provided, which outlined current district graduation requirements, existing state guidelines, future graduation requirements as amended by state statute in May of 2018, and DRG information. Additional information regarding these new expectations is being researched, and guidance from the State Department of Education is being pursued. Board members will review this document and direct questions to the central office staff. This item will be on the agendas of future instructional committee meetings for discussion and policy development. The financial reports for June 2018 indicated an expected surplus of $753,936. The board will request that the town council have this money placed in a 1% account. Also, approximately a $53,000 grant for displaced students was awarded and will be applied to last year's budget. The cafeteria financial reports for June 2018 indicated that a second payment in the amount of $13,604 for participation in healthy foods was received. Free and reduced meal paperwork is to be offered online after staff training occurs. The whole grain waiver was applied for in June 2018 and was granted for the 2018-2019 school year. There were no customer service incidents in the month of June. Work continues on the new scan cards for student use in our cafeterias. The photo companies are currently designing the new cards. A 25% increase in field trip participation was noted with Moses White Beach and Cook Hill Schools utilizing meals from our food service program for field day. Over the summer, the Food Services Department provided 1,080 meals daily for seven days for a work camp project in July. This was a large catering event, and many compliments were received by staff regarding the quality of food and the service provided. A net profit of $10,600 was realized. The goal of the Food Services Department is to increase meals and participation. Many new initiatives have been introduced over the past year with cafeteria managers carefully controlling their costs. A year-to-date loss of $34,908.22 was reported. It should be noted that there was no Board of Education contribution this year, as there has been in the past years. However, there is a cash balance, which Mr. Brown will share at this time regarding the offset of this deficit.
Yeah, so the Food Service Department also had, they have about, or they had about $130,000 in cash beginning of the year, so that will cover the deficit, and there's still a cushion with that money.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Item 14, new business, I do not believe we have any to discuss. Item 15, Administration Report, Dr. Menzo, you are up.
Yes, I just want to highlight a couple items. Number one, last Thursday, I had a meeting with the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, park and rec, health department, Youth and Social Services, as well as Ken Welch from the Coalition of For Better Wallingford, to discuss the crisis regarding vaping and jewels. Basically, the electronic cigarettes have now proliferated much of schools across the country, and obviously, it's not any different in Wallingford. So we came together based on a recent presentation that was done at Shan High School, which will be done also at Lyman Hall High School on October 18, in the evening, for parents to discuss the imperative for us all to come together, wrap our minds around this, and put out a general message going out to all citizens, or at least to all parents of our school district, which went out on Friday afternoon, which I shared with all the board members in your Friday update. I sent it to all of you, as well as I shared with you a variety of resources on vaping to make you aware of the circumstances. The law states that students under the age of 18 are not allowed to possess or to purchase any vaping devices. So as a result, which was also shared in the memo to you, as well as in my Monday update to the whole community today, and last Friday, and an email that went out to all parents, is that if a child is caught in Wallingford Public Schools breaking the law, the police will be called. The police will then have to determine what their next steps are, but we will be calling the police because they are breaking the law to either possess or purchase. Obviously, they have purchased or they've received it, but they're possessing it, and that is against the law for a minor to have that. In addition, we'll be contacting Youth and Social Services, as we do with other circumstances, for the student to participate in a program to assist him or her to no longer need the vaping device. There will also be disciplinary consequences that abide by the board policy. So again, just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. At the present time, I'm trying to facilitate a meeting with the same parties to go over a wider community effort and a wider community response to the challenge that we face, similar to what we did with underage drinking, as well as some of the opioid challenges that the town has had. The Coalition for For Better Wallingford has already activated itself and are doing remarkable things like they always do. We did our part, our homework was to put out the message with, that was developed by the mayor and the police chief, and then to add our piece, so that was done on Friday. Now it's a matter of pulling the rest of the group together, which we're identifying a date for, within the next two weeks, to pull everybody together to activate more resources around this topic. If any parents or anyone who's watching has any questions, please feel free to reach out to your building principal, or they could reach out to myself at Central Office. In addition, I just wanted to mention, the last thing is that our facilities study, the meetings have concluded as of last Thursday evening. The facility study group is now pulling together all the data, and they're preparing a presentation to the Board of Education. That, we confirmed today, will be November 5. It's a Monday, November 5, and that will occur here. I got permission to use the town council chambers, and we will have it televised, so we do have the public television, the staff for the town.
Is that a regular, not to interrupt-
That's a regular instructional committee meeting.
So we'll do instruction here as well?
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep. So that might be the instructional committee meeting, but we'll advertise it as a board meeting.
Fine, thank you.
We are going to start at 6 o'clock, just because if, we want to make sure that we give ample time for the presentation on the part of the consultants, and then offer time for questions and answers from them. So I just wanted to, that's hot off the presses, but I wanted to let you all know, and we were fortunate enough, I called over to town hall, the space is available, we booked it, I asked for the TV, so that should be set up too, so we should be in good stead for that meeting on November 5. So there are other things we could talk about, but I think in the interest of time, I could defer those till next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Menzo, I appreciate that. Okay, our last item, number 16, are announcements, and also 17-date of next meeting, Board of Ed televised meeting. So Monday, October 1, is our instructional committee meeting at 6:00 PM at our Board of Education conference room at 100 South Turnpike Road. Tuesday, October 9, is our operations meeting, also at 6:00 PM at 100 South Turnpike Road. And then lastly, our televised meeting here is Monday, October 22, at the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30. And if nobody else has anything else, for the good of the order, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.